Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium, make a statement, or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by planning staff in the order hands were raised and state their name and address for the record. The planning commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. For those participating remotely, please watch the following instructions on how to raise your hand in the Zoom program. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October 26th meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that item? Pardon me. Is there any comment or changes to those minutes? Motion on item number one.
Adam Morehouser, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 26th meeting.
Mike Ralston will second.
A motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 26th meeting. Roll call vote, Jeff Barth.
Aye.
Adam Morehouser.
Aye.
Doug Odie.
Aye.
Mike Ralston.
Aye.
Becky Randall.
Aye.
Ryan Vanderfoot.
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye.
Madam Chairman.
Pardon me.
You want to back up one slide. We need to have public input, so you need to ask for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move back. Okay, first on the agenda, I forgot, we have to have public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand, and if you are attending remotely, you will be unmuted to comment.
No hands are raised.
Items number two through seven are conditional use permits. Any final action taken on the conditional use permits tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless our written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Wednesday, December 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Next, I'll read the description of item number two. If anyone wishes to comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. Item number two is conditional use permit 20-48 to exceed 2,400 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 3,700 square feet on the property legally described as track 7A, Christianson Second Edition, South Half, Southwest Quarter, Section 23, Township 102 North, Range 51 West. Petitioner is Ron Cheddar. Property owner is Casey Rierson, 46426 Highway 38, about a quarter mile east of Hartford. David?
Good evening, Commissioner. David Heinold, County Planning Department. So the petitioner is Ron Cheddar. He is representing the owner of the property is Casey Rierson. Location is 46426 Highway 38. As you can see on the map, on the overhead, it's outlined in red. It is a part of a little subdivision there just off, just north of Highway 38. As you can see off to the left of the image, this is kind of adjacent to the city of Hartford. Did reach out to the Hartford staff and did not receive any concerns about the proposed building size, which would be proposed building size of 42 by 64 for personal storage. The petitioner does have an existing 10 by 14 shed on the property. It's immediately just adjacent to the house, or close to the house on the south side. Went out some of the buildings in the area and took some pictures of the site. And as you can see, the property immediately to the east has about 4,351 square feet. There's a couple buildings there. It's like a hoop shed structure there. And then the rest of the properties mostly entail like two-stall detached garages. As you can see here, here's the site plan where the building would go, kind of tucked back in the southwest corner of the property. The petitioner has already laid out the groundwork for the building, looks like, for that structure. And this is the driveway leading up to the petitioner's house, or the property owner's house. And then this is looking straight towards where the proposed building would be located. And then, so this is the building to the east of the subject property, one of the largest sizes. As you can see, it's a couple different buildings there, a little bit older. And then here's additional building, that two-stall garage with the add-on there. And then I believe that's all the pictures that I have there. Staff recommends approval of their request to allow 3,700 square feet with a total of six conditions, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for David? Is the petitioner here?
I checked, he's not here.
Any comments, commissioners?
There's no objection, then I move approval.
And there are no hands raised.
Thanks, David. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Adam Morehouser, I'll second it.
A motion is made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-48. Will, any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote, Jeff Barth.
Aye.
Adam Morehouser.
Aye.
Doug Odie.
Aye.
Mike Ralston.
Aye.
Becky Randall.
Aye.
Ryan Vanderfoot.
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Item number two has been approved. Item number three is conditional use permit 20-49 to transfer one building eligibility from Roman's Edition, Northeast Quarter, Northwest Quarter, to Track One, Bott's Edition, Northwest Quarter, all in Section 34, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. Petitioner is Stephen Bott, he's also the property owner. It's approximately five miles south of Baltic. Scott?
Yes, this is on South Dakota Highway 115. The applicant is moving a building eligibility from a small lot that is approximately three-fourths of an acre onto the property that he resides on, which is 15.6 acres. As I indicated in my staff report, the existing location of where that building eligibility is located is a fairly nonusable lot, given the curve of South Dakota Highway 115. It just makes sense to move that for future development to this larger lot where they're going to be able to carve out a much nicer parcel if they desire at a later date. This is, if you're familiar with this area, is a fairly well-developed area along Highway 115, sort of between Sioux Falls and Baltic. You can see there are a number of houses there. There are no farming operations in the area, so that's not really an impact. Staff's recommending approval with just the one condition that, once the property is platted, that the applicant file a right to farm notice on the new parcel. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. The applicant's here, if you have any questions for him, but it's a pretty straightforward
Any questions for Scott? Okay, will the petitioner please come forward and state your name and address, sir?
Steve Bott, 25512 475th Avenue, Renner.
Commissioners, any questions for him? Anybody on Zoom, David?
No hands are raised.
Commissioners, any comment?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
This does seem like a pretty straightforward transfer. I mean, I don't see any issue with it, and as such, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Doug Odie will second the motion.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-49. Roll call vote, Jeff Barth.
Aye.
Adam Morehouser.
Aye.
Doug Odie.
Aye.
Mike Ralston.
Aye.
Becky Randall.
Aye.
Ryan Vanderfoot.
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Has been approved. You're free to go, thank you. Item number four is conditional use permit 20-50 to allow an agricultural-related operation, aircraft tire sales for agricultural use on the property legally described as Track Two, Willowitz Edition, Southwest Quarter, Southwest Quarter, Section 14, Township 104 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Joseph Conet, he's the owner as well. It's approximately four miles west of Dell Rapids. David?
Good evening, Planning Commission, David Heinold, County Planning Department. The property, the subject property is 24690 470th Avenue. As you can see, it's outlined in red on the attached map. This actually came to my attention because of a zoning complaint on the property that there was selling aircraft tires on the property. So this application is being brought forth as part of that, in order to kind of rectify the zoning complaint. The site plan, it's kind of hard to see on the map, it looks a little faded, but you can see the darkest bold line, the Morton number two is what it's classified as, is what the petitioner plans to store the, or is already storing the tires out of for the major home occupation, or the agriculture-related operation for the aircraft tire sales for agricultural use. You can kind of see them off to the left there. The petitioner also has two 8 by 40 shipping containers. And then you can see around the north and the west sides of the property, there is about five or six rows of trees there, is a shelter belt. And then this is immediately adjacent to the county highway that runs north-south, just a mile from the Dell Rapids exit highway. The petitioner, this is the proposed, this is the building that's on the site as it exists today. As you can see, there's a trailer there, that's used for just personal use, is what the petitioner has explained. And I walked through the site, just showing you some of the pictures of the tour, the property. This is what's located in the larger accessory building. This is the main building for the tires that exist. As you can see, there's multiple different sizes there. And then this just shows the angle of that, so it's kind of packed full. And this shows the two shipping containers. There's also some larger tires in one of the shipping containers, and this is the one next to the building. And this one has smaller tires in it. The, I guess skip forward to the highway there. Petitioner does have a small sign attached to the mailbox, which is part of the ordinance, there's an allowance for that, up to a total of 16 square feet. So this is a smaller size sign. And then, as you can see, there's the shelter belt off to the right of that image, and then the highway looking north, and the driveway is in the foreground of the image. This is another one of the signs located on the property, just above the address sign. And the house is off in the distance there, and the other building that's on the property is what's used for personal use only. And then, so this is the neighboring property to the south. So this is the only, one of the only acreages that's within a quarter mile of the site. The, as you can see, the house, this is just to show the depth of that shelter belt on the site. And this is looking from the west towards the building, and you can hardly even see anything on the property there. Just showing the type of the trees there in the shelter belt. And then this is looking from the gravel road, which is just a mile south of the paved road. I should believe this is, think of the road, but this is looking towards the northeast, towards the subject property. So staff has been out to the site, and the area around it is primarily in agricultural use, as I mentioned, with just the one house in the vicinity. There is, the county planning commission did approve a conditional use permit for an agriculture-related operation dealing with small engine repair, which would be just behind me to, which was what I was mentioning, to the quarter mile to the west along this gravel road. So the proposed use for aircraft tire sales for agricultural equipment should not negatively affect the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. Effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area, due to the limited nature of this proposed home occupation involving aircraft tire sales for agricultural equipment, should be no effect on the normal and orderly development of surrounding agricultural land. The development is entirely dependent on building eligibilities in the area. Utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Petitioner maintains the access from the paved county highway with the driveway that's there. This property is located about two and a half miles from the Dell Rapids Interstate, interchange exit, and all their facilities are provided. That the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The narrative states that there will be no employees other than the petitioner, the property owners themselves, dealing with the occupation. The driveway contains a wide gravel surface for the tire deliveries. The narrative states that the property owners take pallets of tires themselves to Sioux Falls for drop-off at various shipping companies. The applicant mentions in the narrative that there may be an occasional farmer picking up tires during either spring or fall harvest. Based upon the description of the proposed use, the amount of parking will be adequate for the size of the subject property. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. Petitioner plans to store all of the tires that are associated with the home occupation inside the, it's listed as 40 by 60, but I think it's a little bit larger than that actually. The narrative states that there may be almost two semi-truck loads with a drive van trailer of tires, although there should be a minimal amount of traffic to the residents dealing with the tire sales. Majority of the customer pickups call prior to set up appointments. All lighting on the property shall be a fully cut-off and fully directed downward onto the property in order to prevent light pollution off-site. Six, that the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The site is located in active agricultural production area. Comprehensive plan encourages supportive agriculture and businesses that support agriculture. The agriculture-related operation of aircraft tire sales for agricultural use should fit the intent of the plan. Goal number one of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Plan, states to develop a countywide land use pattern to ensure compatibility and functional relationships among jurisdictions and related land use activities. The proposed land use complements the certain strengths of the economy such as agriculture. The result of this goal is to demonstrate that such land use activities are in the long-term best interest of the county. So with that, staff finds that the proposed home occupation for agricultural-related aircraft tire sales for agricultural use is compatible with the goals and policies of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 20-50 with the following conditions. I can read those, if you would like me to. Note that the occupation shall comply with all regulations of Section 12.0302A, Class 1 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnetoka County. Two, that all signage shall be in conformance with Article 16 and 17 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnetoka County. A building permit is required for installation of any signage. Three, all new or replacement outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff, fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property values. And number four, staff is recommending that the shipping containers shall not be used for commercial storage of tires. Five, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the home occupation at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in the Minnetoka County zoning ordinance. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David? I guess not at this time. As a petitioner here, will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Good evening, Joe Conan, 24690 470th Avenue, Dell Rapids, South Dakota.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I guess I have one, I think I know, I do know the answer, but I just wanted to have it out there. You will be doing no tire repair, or no used tires will be dropped off there?
No, we don't, it's not a tire shop. We basically stock aircraft tires and wheels for farm industrial use.
How far out do you ship?
We shipped some to Prue here a few weeks ago. So that's a rare occasion. We've shipped 40, 42 or 43 states now, and three countries. I want to stress to you guys, though, that it's a hobby business. I've got a full-time job here in Sioux Falls. It's by appointment only. We do a lot of phone orders, internet orders, and it's grown a lot larger than I thought it would in the last few years. It's not going to grow any larger than this. My wife and I are the only people who work there, and nobody else is going to work there. No more buildings, nothing like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? I guess I want to make a comment. You're fully aware of all the conditions that he gave you?
I am.
Okay, I mean, there's a lot of numbers here that I don't know what section is what anyway, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I was just going to ask about the shipping containers. Is that going to be all right, or is that an issue?
That's the only condition that I'm going to ask you guys for a little bit of leniency. The one shipping container that's to the south, the one that's in the open in the yard, we've already sold that. It's going to be out of here, the money's changed hands, it's going to be out of here in a couple days this week. So we've gotten rid of that one there. The other one that's between the trees in the Morton building, I am asking that if there's a way that we could keep that and have tires stored in that storage container, shipping container. I think you can see by the pictures there, we've got it very well-kept, and I'm very proud of how well-kept we keep our acres and clean and not a bunch of junk around there. And when I got that first shipping container, it's difficult when you get those things, but I made sure that it was the proper color and condition that I wanted to fit in that yard. It matches that Morton building very, very close. It's got five rows of trees on the north and west side. It's got the Morton building covered up from the east side. It's set in off the south end, and even when you see the end of it, it's a good-looking shipping container. So that's the only thing that I would like, is be able to keep a few tires in that one shipping container. And like I say, that other one is sold.
Is that the one, and that's sold, that's the one that's?
The one that's sold, the one that's sold is the one, the one that you can see, the one that's out in open right there, yeah. Can you just go back to one slide?
Okay.
No, that's the one I want to keep.
Okay.
Yep, so the one that's out in the open south of that one there.
That one's gone, then.
It's going to be gone. It's not gone this second, but the guy's, it's a done deal, and he's going to come and get it here this week. Yep. So, and otherwise, I agree with everything that David wrote up, and I'm fine with everything. That's the only one point that I would ask for a little bit different answer on.
Any other questions for him? Thank you for now.
Okay, thank you.
David, is there anyone else out there that wishes to speak to this item?
No hands are raised.
Apparently there's nobody else out there either? Okay, commissioners, any comment?
I guess, Madam Chair, I do have a question for David. I'm just curious, now, the petitioner requested that we modify item four. What was it that drove your decision, or your train of thought there, that they needed to be removed from the property?
The commercial storage with the shipping containers, because it's not a permanent structure itself. So that was the main reasoning behind that.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners?
There's no one else in the audience to speak on this item.
Thanks, Scott.
Madam Chair, this is staff, I'll make a motion to approve this condition, this conditional
Do I have a second?
This is Becky, I second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve conditional item 20-50. We'll have to do a roll call vote. Jeff Barth.
Aye.
Adam Morehouser.
Aye.
Doug Odie.
Aye.
Mike Ralston.
Aye.
Becky Randall.
Aye.
Ryan Vanderfoot.
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Item's been approved. But I think the conditions that were placed on that will have to stay as they are. We'll move on to item number five, conditional use permit 20-51 to allow a private campground on the property legally described as gardener's lot one of Track Three. Exception, Track Four, and except H1 and Track One, Olson-Nelson re-edition. Section 10, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is Doc Querring, Precision Capital, South Dakota LLC. He's also the property owner, about a half a mile south of Brandon. Kevin?
Good evening, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Conditional use permit number 2051 is allow a private campground on the property that's adjacent to Hewset Speedway. This land near Hewset Speedway, there's a location, is also, is proposed to be located along the Split Rock Creek. I will note that it's in lowland and start off with it, it's in the floodplain of the Split Rock Creek. And the petitioner has submitted a narrative and site plans for this. I'll show you the site plan, to kind of V-shaped down into that bend in the river, to support the application. Staff has reviewed the narrative and site plans and came up with several concerns based on the initial narrative, specifically that there's no sewer available on the site, that there, at the first time, there was no staff or campground host available on the site, that there's no, there was no plan for severe weather, and that the property is located within the floodplain of the Split Rock Creek. Some of these items have been addressed a little further by the petitioner in an email and a few other attached materials, and we'll kind of go over a little bit of the materials. But oh- But overall, those are the concerns, and they are going to be difficult to overcome without conditions for sure. And some of them, like the floodplain, is not going to be overcome because it's not going to be removed out of the floodplain. And note that the conditional use permit criteria for the area, number one, that the effect upon the use enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the use is already permitted, and upon values, the immediate vicinity. The campground is going to be a less intensive use than the existing racetrack, and it'll be relatively secluded away from many of the residential properties. If you take a look at some of the aerial photography of the properties, that it is in a lowland with some trees around it, river area, and a little distance away from any of the existing residential properties. Number two, that the effect upon the normally and orderly development and improving improvement of the surrounding vacant properties for use is predominant in the area. The future development of this area will predominantly be led by the growth of the city of Brandon. Brandon has this area planned for park and open space in their comprehensive plan. The Hewset Speedway track itself is planned to be commercial use for the future as well. The temporary camping spaces is more or less compatible with the idea of open space in the area around where the bend in the river is. I will note that temporary camping spaces also may lead in the future to dangers from flash flooding or flooding events. Number three, the utilities and access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The property owner will need to extend all the new utilities to the site. He already has access to Highway 11, and drainage will largely remain the same. Staff would like to note that since this is in the floodplain, that if there was any activity taking place in this, that there should be displacement for any materials brought into the floodplain. Materials should be removed out in order to not displace water onto neighboring properties. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The property is very large. It already accommodates lots of parking, so there's plenty of room for overflow parking on the property. Number five, the measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration and lighting, inclusive of light of signs, so none of these constitute a nuisance. Staff would like to note that this is going to be working in conjunction with a racetrack, that the use will not likely increase the nuisances that may already be present with the operation, and that camping generally doesn't increase nuisances such as odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration. And I would also like to point out that perhaps like a staff member or a campground host would maybe be helpful if this was approved to notify campers of, say, pending flood or weather hazards, or reduce nuisances from campers maybe getting a little unruly at the campground. But then I'll finish with six is health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. Staff has brought this in front of the, or brought this to the Minnion County Office of Emergency Management, and that he agreed with the staff's concerns about the floodplain and the potential dangers. And the beginning with the lack of severe weather planning, some of that has turned around with the petitioner's submittals, but then the floodplain risk planning commission will have to consider many conditions if they were to approve this. And at this time, staff is still recommending denial of conditional use permit 2051. Let's go over a couple more slides here. Some more of the photos of the site. There's some materials submitted by the petitioner here, and this shows the location of the floodplain. Let me just get the mouse here, and I'll show where the campground is. If you can see my mouse on the screen, it would be located approximately right here, entirely within the floodplain area. Staff did point out that across the, to the west, across from Brandon, there is the Big Sioux Recreation Area, which is a state park, which is also located in the floodplain, and you can see their camping area. And then the petitioner has submitted a septic location showing that they do have an estate-approved septic line for the property. So with that, I can take any questions, and the petitioner is here today, so he can take questions as well.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Where's the driveway for it at? Which driveway do they think of using to come in there? Off Highway 11 in there? Is it the main one to the south, or...?
Well, the site has two driveway entrances. It has one here and one to the north. The driveway entrance to the south would most likely be used, I guess we'll look, ask the petitioner here, but that is the one that kind of flows best with the configuration that he has submitted.
Any other questions for Kevin? Guess not at this time. As a petitioner here, will you please come forward and state... Go ahead.
Were you asking for questions? We have our hand raised. We didn't understand.
The petitioner's going to come forward first, and then you can address...
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm actually not the petitioner. I'm a representative of the petitioner. My name is Lanny Oranger with Innovative Design, 2700 West 3rd Street, Suite 3, Sioux Falls. Essentially, we put the plan together and the location, fully acknowledging that it was in a floodplain. As we had shown, the Big Sioux Recreation Area, which is a state park, is also located in a floodplain. And I think if you looked at a lot of campgrounds, most of them are located adjacent to rivers, adjacent to lakes, et cetera, and again, a large number of them are in floodplains. The other thing that we took into consideration here is the fact that this campground will only operate in conjunction with the racetrack. It's not a campground that's open that you can come in, reserve a spot to come spend a week with your family and have a vacation in the Brandon area. It's really associated with the racetrack. So we see the majority of the use occurring, a few of them on a weekly basis, but the majority of the time would be when they have bigger race programs, two- or three-day race programs. People would come from the region and have a place to stay. The other, to try to address some of the concerns with the floodplain, racing doesn't start typically until Mother's Day. When this area has flooded, majority of the time is in the spring, when we have spring melt, and you get plenty of notice for that. So typically, by the time they start races in May, the water has receded, if the water has come up. And then if there is any other flooding later in the year, there's typically plenty of notice that if we had to get some people out of there, we could get them out of there. I don't know that there's ever been a situation where there's been a flash flood where waters came up within a number of hours without an advance notice of that. There will be a full-time staff. Anytime the racetrack is occupied or the campground, there's a full-time staff person on-site to address any of these kind of issues or concerns. We did address the sewer issue. In addition to that, the owner will have contracted with the sewage disposal system guy to come out. If anybody that is staying there doesn't want to move their camper over to have it, because if, once you set up, if your tank gets full, you have to pull everything up, move it over, empty it, and go back and set up. But they will have access to a sewage disposal system that comes through and empties out people's campers when needed. There was a fourth item there, the safety. The racetrack, as you know, was just purchased in July, and they have been working on their safety and emergency program since that time. And we gave a preliminary copy of it to Mr. Hookman late last week. It's still in process, but that will incorporate both the operation of the racetrack and the operation of the campground.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I have one, I guess. Number one, this isn't even a question, but thank goodness it got sold and it got renamed to Hewset Speedway. Big thank you there. My biggest concern about this whole thing is there's no mention about garbage disposal. I'm just kind of worried, you know, you get a big wind, you know, it's the river's right there, you got agriculture ground across from that, and farmers don't like it when trash blows into their fields. So my big concern is with, there's nothing mentioned about trash.
Well, Doug, we did address that in our original narrative, and there'll be trash areas throughout the campground. And then there's also going to be a large roll-off dumpster for all that to be disposed in once the weekend is over, et cetera.
Could there be any type of fence put up along the south side to catch garbage that might blow accidentally, so it doesn't go into the river?
I don't know that that is, was a consideration. If it ends up being a condition, we could certainly discuss that. I will say, it's not a bad idea, not only for that purpose, but if you've been out there, there is, that bank is relatively steep, so you wouldn't want any kids falling off it either.
Any other questions for him?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess I have, still have concerns about flash floods during the race with, you know, all these many, many campers down there along the river. Only two ways out, both uphill, people are rushing around trying to hook up their trailers, trying to hook up their race cars. It could happen at night, could be all kinds of confusion, gridlock, out of control. I also wonder about it being an after-hours attraction where people are going to have informal prom parties or hangout parties. Is it going to be locked up tight? And how will law enforcement know if it's locked up or not? And then continuing, I worry about just dumping the waste, you know, it's not hard to, in the cover of night, to unhook your tank and drain it right there into the creek. And then there's the electrical stuff. If the electricity is hot and it becomes submerged, it seems to me that that would be a hazard to life. And so I'm not sure we have a good grip on all of the possible issues.
Can you address any of that?
I think we've addressed the sewer issue with the fact that we do have onsite septic system that we're working with the state to confirm that it's got the capacity, and if it doesn't have the capacity, we'll add a holding tank for that, as well as having the contracted sewage disposal system available. The, having an onsite person there all the time, they travel through that. It's not necessarily campground host. They will be staying, they typically stay in their campers, but not right there. It's actually, when you come right, come down that south hill, there's a little fenced area where they have their campers where they stay. But they roll through there on a continual basis while the campground is occupied, and they can address any of those concerns. If you've ever been around a camper that had the black sewage opened up inadvertently or even on purpose, it's pretty easy to detect. So I wouldn't be concerned about that, although there is still a risk of that, but that, they got the same risk at the state parks and any other campground that you've got. In regards to the security when it's not occupied, both of the gates, both of the roads that lead down into the racetrack have gates that are blocked when it's not occupied. If you go out there right now, they've got eight-foot gates that are all locked up. You can't get through there. You could probably climb the fence, but you couldn't drive any vehicles in there, et cetera. And that would continue to be the situation. Again, in regards to the flooding, all I can say is history has shown that that hasn't flash flooded in a situation where, as if you had a dam that might burst, et cetera, it does flood typically in the spring with the snow melt and some early rains. And then if we had, like last year, when we had excessive flooding everywhere, but nothing that kind of came up within a couple hours. Electrically, we have addressed that in our application as well. All of the electrical pedestals will be elevated and have drop cords that come down so that they can be removed during the off-season so that they're not subject to flooding in the spring.
At what height are they elevated to, then?
Probably eight feet. We've determined that the 100-year flood level up there at the lowest point of the whole thing is approximately nine feet. The base flood elevation for that.
Okay, any other questions for him? Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to let you know there's someone in the anti-room that, or the overflow room, they'd like to speak. So when you're ready, I'll go get them.
Why don't you sit down for now, and then if we have other questions, then we'll go ahead. We'll happy to come back up. Hello?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Becky.
Yes.
I have a question. Or is the applicant sat down yet?
She has a question.
Go ahead, if you've got a question. You want to come back up, sir?
I was just wondering, you know, we can't really see the gradient or how the land slopes, and this ties in, I think, a little bit with Doug's question is, what's going to help to prevent drainage and just runoff from going into the river?
The natural slope of the land is towards the creek, kind of in all directions, kind of that V-shaped to a certain degree. Again, it's a situation where we're confident that we can control garbage, we can control debris. They've got to have monitoring of people out there. Again, it's no different than the state park, honestly. If I can ask you to kind of imagine that, it's the same situation. We'll have somebody there that's monitoring it. The Sioux River doesn't fill with debris any more than it might otherwise, and I think we can have that same kind of situation at the racetrack.
Any other questions for him? You can sit down again, and if we need you, we'll have you come back up and address any questions. Anybody on Zoom, David? Corey?
This is Corey and Steve, so I'll let Steve talk.
Okay, go ahead. Will you please state your name and address?
Steve Thompson, 26351 South McCarty Road, Brandon. I do have approximately seven acres on the other side of the river, which runs up against the racetrack, and then also land to the south of it, so right up against the whole sides of the river. I am concerned about trash and runoff, and if they haul gravel in there to, if they, I don't know if they're going to raise it any or not, but then, of course, that would push more water onto my property. And, you know, trash, I had thought, when they talked about putting up fence up to catch trash, which would probably be a good idea, but if it floods, it's also going to catch all the trash from the flooding too, which would, you know, maybe rip the fence out, and who knows? The one time it did really flash flood is when the dam broke. And then we had lots of water.
This is Corey Thompson, same address as Steve's wife. You know, we're supportive of Hewset. We were glad to see that it was operational again. So we were ourselves race fans years ago. We don't go as often now, but the biggest concern is, yeah, that it's so close, there's so many spots, and it's so close to the Split Rock. And that area, almost every spring is, you know, if it's normal run-up with snow, is our bottom fields are also, have water on them. When the dam broke... When the dam broke up at Jasper, within not a very long time, it was a massive flood, that was in, I think, 93, so some years ago, but also when the ice jams happened, was that a year or two ago, that part, I mean, it was like a, it was horrible, you know, and of course, there probably wouldn't be campers there, maybe, at that time, depending on if they're, our, our one concern was if there was going to be camping there all year long, or if it's just associated with the races, so we're more, more happy to hear that if it's just associated with the races. We certainly get, we stay up at night with the noise as it is with the races, but again, we support Houston and the local economy, so it's really about doing good service for the, the wildlife and the things that are down there, and we do have land on, a short piece of land on that other side, so with the river barrier, you know, concerned, again, that things would be going into the creek or back over onto the agricultural land, so we just want to make sure that, you know, there's a good plan in place for that. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. David, is there anybody else on Zoom besides them?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, Scott, do you have somebody else that would like to come forward? Dress, please.
Jeff Peterson, this is Dwayne Makowski and Pete Makowski.
Come up to the speaker.
They own the property all around, basically where, other side of where the people are just speaking. And a lot of the concerns we have as well, we're concerned with the time, timeline of is it going to be all summer as well. The waste, they're really concerned with, because they did have some races there this last summer, and it seemed like it took a couple days to get all the garbage cleaned up. It was piled up all over out there in bags, and then laying around, and I think it was Monday, and then Tuesday, they're just getting it all cleaned up. You know, with the little wind, that's an issue, we all know that. Trespassing, that's another thing. People, that amount of people there, they're going to get bored maybe, and they're going to start walking and going on properties. That's a concern of ours as well. And then the habitat there, that's, Mr. Makowski bought that ground for the hunting and the wildlife out there, and the peace and quiet outside of town. I don't know what the fire control part is, if you can have a little fire or not, that's a concern of ours as well, they're going to be starting fires down there, you know. And then the weather plan is one of them too. And it did flood all year last year, basically, and that's not this last summer of the year before, it was up on the track, so the water does rise over there. And that's kind of our concern too, is if there's going to be a full-time staff as well. So, these are just some few things that we jotted down for the meeting, that we are concerned about as well.
Okay, are you speaking for all of you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure.
Just, so I'm clarified, you got the property to the south, across, across the creek?
Basically, the gentleman that was speaking before on Zoom, he has a little piece in there, but Mr. Makowski owns the whole.
Yep, that whole bottom there.
Yeah, the whole bottom there.
Okay, I guess we'll see if he wants to address any of those items that you have. Anyone else out there that, in the other room, Scott at all? Anybody else on Zoom?
No hands are raised.
Everyone's wished to speak to this item. Sir, would you like to come forward? Can you address any of those items they're talking about?
I think we've tried to address most of them previously, the emergency plan is in process. Again, waste, we've, we've said we're going to set out dumpster trash areas throughout the camping area, and pick those up and put them in a, in a big dumpster at the end of the event. I was out there when they did have the camping this past fall, and there were some garbage bags, but they were very nicely closed up and set there, so that they could go around with their gator and pick them up and dispose of them properly. Again, the emergency plan. The flooding, I, I and everybody out there acknowledges that it is subject to flooding, it has flooded, it will flood again, but again, we're confident that when there's the flooding concerns, there won't be any camping, and there won't be year-round camping. This is really only from early May till probably October 1st at the very latest, and only when there's race events occurring.
Okay, any other further questions for him?
So you just said, when the race events occur, what about if somebody decides to bring in an outdoor concert? Will there be camping on that side then?
I should probably clarify that, at this point, there hasn't been any concerts or anything that have been scheduled, but I would, again, I'm, I'm speaking somewhat on behalf of the owner who's not here, I would anticipate if there were going to be a concert, that they would ask for camping to occur then too. What we've asked for in the application is no more than two days before and two days and after an event, just because, as an example, the World of Outlaw guys might be racing in North Dakota on Tuesday and not race at Houston until Thursday or Friday, some of those guys come into town a day or two early, so, and then they wait before they head off to the next racetrack type of deal, so that's why we've asked for that. But again, I think that the majority of the camping is going to occur when there's those three or four large events, otherwise it might be on a weekly race, a dozen campers, maybe. Again, there's no way to know for sure, but they're not anticipating it being heavily used on a regular basis.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Adam.
You brought up the fire pits, I guess, what about, I guess, what's your stance on that?
We'd be very happy to have it be a condition, if there's no fire pits allowed.
Okay, any other further questions for him? Okay, I guess, you have any other further comments, Kevin?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, so, if the commission does kind of point in the direction of possible approval, there was a handful of conditions that I, I did write, and with just some of the ideas that were in mind, the, the timeframe of when camping can be done, how many spots, campground host, there's some of the ideas, including any like dirt gravel that's brought in, you must displace anything with the equal amount of dirt or gravel out of the site, so that we don't increase the flood plain. These are just some ideas, and if fire pits have to be a condition, that would also be something that can be added to it, so, yeah. These were not in your packet, they were produced after staff received the second kind of proposal by the petitioner, so.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, since there's no further people that wish to speak to this item, I guess I'll close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
I guess my feeling is, it feels like we're, we're 90% of the information we're looking for has been produced, and all there's some information, maybe some meetings needed to occur with the neighbors to make sure that there's some harmony out there, but it also feels as though, you know, understanding that Houston is a Speedway, that maybe the campground might complement that, with certain parameters on that campground, of course. You know, I appreciate Kevin putting together this, this initial list of conditions, and, I mean, not to kick the can down the road, but would maybe propose that we look at a deferral to allow some of these things to develop further, and allow staff to consider actual conditions for review.
Is that a motion?
I guess I'd make that motion.
Is it January or when?
Just a month. I mean, I guess maybe just, not to defer too long, and maybe understand too, that a lot of construction isn't going to occur probably till spring at this point, so I guess, yeah, I'd make a motion till January 25th.
I'll second that motion. Adam Morehouser.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to approve the, to actually defer the conditional use permit 2051 for the private campground. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Go ahead.
I'm going to vote against it, but I, I don't favor this project yet, and I also know that it would be appealed to the regular commission, and by then, some of those concerns that have been expressed might be similar to the deferral that we're going for. I think the deferral is a fine idea, I'm going to vote against it, because I'm going to vote against the project if we come to that point tonight.
Okay, any other further discussion on this item? Okay, we're either approving or denying the deferral until the January meeting. Jeff Barth?
No.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
No.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
No.
Ryan Vanderflit?
Aye.
It's three to what?
Three to three. Time, three to three.
Wouldn't you know. I'm going to go with aye for the deferral. So this item will be deferred till the January meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, conditional use permit 20-52 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 8,310 square feet on the property legally described as the north 564.25 feet, the west 800 feet, northeast quarter, northwest quarter, section 22, township 101 north, range 48 west. Petitioner is Larry Coonert, he's also the property owner, three miles south of Brandon. Kevin?
County Planning Department. As you noted, this is a conditional use permit for a larger accessory building, and is located south of Brandon. The petitioner would like to build a 2,552 square feet accessory building for the purposes of storage and for family gatherings. The petitioner has stated this to be a man cave type of a thing, that allows for family gatherings that are large to go outside of the house and meet together, which is to be a more common trend in the county, to have these accessory building gathering spaces. Staff would like to note that there are some concerns, and that primarily that there should be conditions to discourage this from being used as a second dwelling, or as a second residence. Primarily, that one of the main things staff is recommending it would be a little different, is that to require a driveway between the proposed building be connected to the main farmstead. This will not only connect it visually and, and into the farmstead, but also would help with emergency management, if there was a call for the building, and they go to the address, which is the, the primary driveway over here, they can still reach the, the building in a quicker manner by connecting the driveways. There's also other conditions that are more general, specific, are more general towards larger accessory buildings, so there'd be nine conditions, and staff is recommending approval of those nine conditions. Is there any questions?
Yeah, Kevin, I have, are you just, did you recommend putting additional driveway off the township road?
No, the, the petitioner wants a driveway from the township road, and he would be required to get a township driveway permit for that, but staff is recommending that he puts a driveway connecting to the main farm, or the main residence area.
Okay, so there would not be another driveway off the township road?
That would be up to him to have that second driveway or not.
And if there would, he would have to go to township to approve that?
Yeah, he would have to get approval from the township.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin? Is the petitioner here?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Zoom.
Sir, can you state your name and address, since you're the petitioner? Mr. Coonert, can you hear me?
Well, I guess.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we defer action on this until we take care of the other item that's remaining on our agenda. So let's go to 28-53.
Yes, Larry Coonert, 48, 135, 260.
Thank you, Mr. Coonert. Anyone have any questions for him? Anyone out there on Zoom, David, at all?
No hands are raised.
Okay. And nobody else is in the room back, okay. Okay, come in.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Becky.
What are, what are the two rooms that are on the, on the plan?
Kevin, can you answer that?
Perhaps, excuse me, perhaps the, there's a shop here, and then there's the lounge area here, he has a bathroom here, and a bathroom here, and I'm not sure, you would have to ask the petitioner what these two rooms are.
Mr. Coonert, did you hear that question?
Yes, I was going to use them little rooms as, be for my tires, because I got a lot of UTVs and ATVs and lawnmowers, and all the nicer stuff I want is this shop for. Put in them, there he is. Did you hear me?
Yes, I think, Becky, did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for him?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff, I make a motion to approve this.
Hold a second.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 20-52. Any further discussion? Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflit?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. That item has been approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven is conditional, conditional use permit 20-53 to transfer one building eligibility from the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, to the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, all in section 20, township 102 north, range 47 west. Petitioner is Dennis Anderson, he's also the property owner, approximately two miles northeast of Brandon. Scott?
Thank you, Scott Anderson, planning director, and the request is to transfer one building eligibility, as you indicated, from one quarter section to, from the southeast to the southwest quarter, quarter of section 20. This is basically located between Brandon and Valley Springs, it's three miles one way and three miles the other way to each of them, and this is an area that is a mixture of agricultural land with a
an area that is a mixture of agricultural land with a very few residential properties. The applicant owns 80 acres and the and resides on the property. And in his narrative, he indicated that he wants to move it to the west side of the existing shelter belt, and I can show you a quick picture. Kevin, you want to move it to the there you go, that's so you can see that the applicant is the owner lives in the shelter belt, they want to move it to the other side. And they did indicate that it they would be moving it closer to an animal feeding operation, but they do have a waiver from the person that is operating the 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 animal feeding operation. The reason to move this is they would like to allow the there'll be a residence constructed for Christopher and Anna Anderson, which is the son and daughter-in-law of the applicant, and they have indicated or the property owner has indicated that they will be assisting with the farming and care of the parents on the property. So I'm recommending approval with the condition that they file a right-to-farm notice when they plot that property, and the applicants are here if you have any questions. So I are if any questions for me as well?
Any questions for Scott?
Okay.
Guess not. Will the petitioner please come forward and state your name and address?
Dennis Anderson, 48512262 Street, Valley Springs, South Dakota.
Any questions for him? Anything on Zoom, David?
No hands are raised.
Guess there's no questions for you right now. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. Item seven, the conditional use 20-53.
Doug Odie, a second now.
Motion is made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-53. Any further comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Barth? Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall? Ryan Vanderflut?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. The item has been approved, you are free to go. Any old business?
Just a reminder that we have two vacancies coming up or two terms are going to expire, Mike Ralston's and Bonnie's, and we have advertised that, and so I think you've both already reapplied, and I will be preparing a memo that it's closing on the 28th, so we have another week that it'll be open, and then I will set the the appointment date for some meeting in December, and I'll let you know.
Thanks, Scott. Any new business at all? Okay, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Doug Odie will make that motion to adjourn.
You're going to make a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall? Vanderflut?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.